I'd like to call to order the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for July 8th, 2020 via Zoom. As usual, we'll ask for a moment of silence and in that moment of silence, remembering all those that have been affected by this Corona virus and also the our local heroes that are taking care of us in our daily lives. The nurses, doctors, first responders, our police, fire and EMTs, and all those that are working in the public, in the supermarkets, in the restaurants, those who are bringing our food to our cars or delivering it to our homes, and those who are picking up our garbage and keeping us safe every day. We are getting out of this little by little and it's going to take time, but I'm sure we'll rebound. And I just again would like to say that we all bow our heads in a moment of silence and pray for these people. Okay, if you'd like to say pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to the agenda today?
I have no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have no special actions. Do we have any public comment that has been emailed in?
I do not have any public comment as of right now.
Okay, and I guess we get right to the police report. Chief Hearn.
Good afternoon, everybody. At the June 2020 police report, we logged in 21,436 miles during routine patrol, documented 1,541 calls for service. On June 26th, the COVID-19, the governor places in the green mode with some restrictions still in place. So we were still operating under those conditions. We affected 14 arrests. One was a significant arrest involving a weapons and narcotics violations on a vehicle investigation. We had one terrorist threat, one auto theft, one possession of narcotics, two assaults, one was domestic related, and eight DUI arrests. There were 12 new cases referred to Detective Division. We handled 45 traffic crashes, which resulted in seven injuries. We issued 123 citations and 43 warnings. We had two major deployments of resources in the aftermath of that George Floyd incident in Minneapolis. On June 4th, we were deployed to the Garden of Reflection for a vigil. And on June 6th, we had a protest at Sycamore and Washington. Both incidents went off extremely well. There were no incidents of violence or damage to properties. All constitutional rights were protected and the officers were thanked for their professionalism. We're still having a major issue with frauds. We had two frauds, one with $44,000 and one with $30,000 that were done over the phone through transactions. I'm just going to remind the public, please do not give your personal information out or buy gift cards to anyone you do not know. And if you have elderly parents or grandparents, please speak to them personally on the phone, making sure they're not giving their information out to people that they don't know by the phone. If they get a call and they allege that the grandson or the granddaughter was arrested, please reach out to your family members and confirm that information before providing any financial support to that area. When we go back into our next first live meeting, I will be submitting to the Board of Supervisors an official letter of commendation. I'm not going to go too much into detail with it, but on June 15th, we had a 15-year-old juvenile that lives in a township that rendered aid to one of our elderly residents as a result of a heart attack. The 15-year-old was coached by 911, who administer CPR. The juvenile did extremely well and dedicated his all his efforts to reviving the gentleman. Unfortunately, the gentleman subsequently passed away in a hospital, but I do want to recognize that juvenile. So you will be receiving that in the near future. For selected enforcement initiatives, we did activate our major incident response team five times in the month of June. That was as a result of various protests are going on throughout the region, because we are involved in that task force operations for that. We did also institute a commercial vehicle truck initiative. They were re-instituted back again. And we had six vehicles stopped in Newtown with three citations and one truck placed out of service. Finally, as a result of cooperation with the Board of Supervisors and a request from the board, we're going to be having a Newtown Township Police Town Hall meeting on Thursday, July 23rd, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in our Township Administration Building. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions still in place, there will be a limited capacity for this particular meeting of approximately 20 attendees. So you can find out about policing in your neighborhood, get an overview of our Township Police Department, how we uphold the highest ethical standards and promote accountability for our department and our profession, and how we can strengthen community engagement in our community. You'll have the opportunity to ask myself questions as well as other officers that will be in attendance. So please feel free to stop by, at least just to say hello. It's an opportunity to have a dialogue between the police and our community members. You can meet new friends and neighbors and discover that we're all in this together. If you're unable to meet the meeting or you can't gain access due to limited numbers, please send your requests by emails, your questions, your concerns, or your comments, even your support of our police department, to policetownhall@newtownpa.gov. That will be on our website as well, and I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Chief Forsyth with his report. Chief, you there? Hey, Chief, you're on. I can't hear you. Microphone must be off. Audio. Chief Forsyth, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. You're on. Thank you.
Okay. It's a pleasure being here. This is all new to me, the technology that you folks are using. So I'd like to submit my reports for the last three months. For the month of March, we had a total of 88 calls for service. We had two building fires, eight dwelling fires, one brush fire, two service calls, one vehicle extrication, 46 EMS calls, 15 good intent calls, 13 fire alarm systems. For our fire safety inspections, we did 22 in Newtown Township and 40 in Newtown Borough. Our training hours are 138 hours for emergency services and 32 hours for Newtown Fire Association. Highlighted events for March, the Fire Association responded to assist Northampton Township. On the dwelling fires during that fire, one of the Fire Association members, Bill Fabian, was injured with a fractured leg. He has since had surgery and is returning back to duty at the end of this month. On March 13th, Tim Chamberlain graduated from the National Fire Academy with his Executive Fire Officer Certification. This is a huge accomplishment for Tim and it's going to serve our department well. So I'd like to congratulate Tim on that accomplishment. March 16th, as directed by the Township Manager, Emergency Services suspended all inspection duties due to COVID-19. That's my report for March. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the chief? That seems like none.
For the month of April, we had 40 calls for service. One building fire, three dwelling fires, one vehicle, three brush fires, one service call, two vehicle extracations, five EMS calls, seven good intent calls, 17 fire alarms, for a total of 40 calls. Due to our inspection program being shut down, we had no inspections for the month of April. Our training was 80 hours for NEST and 40 hours for the Fire Association. During the month of April, we responded on two working fires to assist Northampton Township. April 9th, Emergency Services Department assisted the Bucks County Emergency Services Department and a Department of Health in the establishment of the Field Hospital at the NAC during the pandemic. And on April 30th, the Emergency Services Staff went back to their 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. shift seven days a week. That's our report for April. For the month of May, we had 58 calls for service. Two building fires, seven dwelling fires, one vehicle, one brush fire, one domestic rescue, one vehicle extrication, 21 EMS calls, four good intent calls, 20 fire alarms, for a total of 58 calls. Again, in May, we were suspended with our annual fire safety inspections. Our training consisted of 80 hours for emergency services and 80 hours for the Fire Association. On May 18th, Emergency Services Department assisted again the County Emergency Services Staff in dismantling the Field Hospital at the NAC. And on May 21st, the Emergency Services Department returned to our normal operating schedule. As Chief Hearn said, we are currently operating under the green phase and we are in the process of restarting our annual fire safety inspections for the month of July. So hopefully, we can see some type of getting back to some type of normal. That's my report for March, April, and May.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, seeing none. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no minor approvals or public hearing today. We'll go into reports of committees, boards, and commissions. I see Mr. Fidler for the Planning Commission. Alan, you might have to unmute yourself.
Start my video. Okay. All right. I think we're all set. Okay, I'm ready to give you a synopsis from our July 7, 2020 meeting. We did meet via Zoom last evening. We reviewed four zoning hearing board applications. The first was an amended application for Newtown Bucks Associates for the Newtown Shopping Center on West Road, where the applicant is seeking variances to construct a 12,500 square foot building for Old Navy and proposed additions to the existing Chick-fil-A to improve efficiency and traffic circulation. The kitchen expansion and right turn lane for Chick-fil-A is still proposed, and the amendment proposes two more changes, adding a second drive-through and a pass-through lane adjacent to the drive-through window to allow for a drastic reduction in service time and greater circulation of traffic. Impervious surface parking calculations and dedicated loading areas for Chick-fil-A were discussed along with a detailed conversation about the traffic flow and the reduction in parking spaces to the right of the entrance from 12 to 6 as a result of the amendment. The applicant stated that they have communicated the specifics with Applebee's and the Acme, and both are supportive of the changes. Our consensus is to support the application subject to the incorporation of comments and discussion points made by the commission. The second application was a residential one for Mr. and Mrs. Dylann at 59 Clover Lee, who proposed to build a 491 square foot, one-story addition, covered deck, and 268 square foot garage addition. They're also proposing removing 679 square feet of impervious surface from the property. The proposed addition will be constructed on a non-conforming lot and will exceed the maximum impervious surface, side yard setbacks, and minimum distance from the building's allowances. The applicant had received letters of support from their HOA and three neighbors, two of which are immediate neighbors on either side. Consensus again of the commission is to recommend the board support this relief request and write a letter of support to the zoning hearing board for this relief. The next application was also a residential one from Mr. Craig Ogilvie at 64 Harmony Way, and he is to extend an existing patio on an irregular lot by 135 square feet, resulting in a 19-foot rear yard setback where 30 feet is required. The commission noted that the HOA approved of the changes, and we did discuss where runoff. The commission suggested the applicant consider a rain guard or barrel to mitigate any potential issues. And again, the consensus of the commission was to recommend support of the application, provided compliance with our suggestions. The final application was from Mr. and Mrs. Palliada at 5 Warwick Court to construct an 18-by-20-foot platform deck, which will exceed the minimum side yard setback by 7.28 feet. The applicant presented letters of support from his HOA and adjacent neighbor. And again, our consensus was to recommend support on the relief requested, and that concludes my report.
Any questions from Mr. Fidler?
I have a question. I noticed that this, these improvements at the shopping center, there were actually two things. One was for the Chick-fil-A and the extra lane and so on. And one was for the Old Navy store. I was wondering, is this a usual to have two two applications in one, basically? Alan?
I don't know. I think that would be a question for Dave. Here's Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Alan. John, yes. And the reason why it's on one application is because the property is owned by one entity, and they're proposing various improvements to the property, not all of it. I don't think the existing shopping center area from Acme down to the pet stores being modified or touched. But certainly, the Chick-fil-A is a standalone building in the shopping center. The proposed Old Navy is a proposed new building in the shopping center. So the owner, certainly not unusual for the owner, to include all relief requested on one application.
I just thought, you know, we can have comments on one versus the other, but it won't make much of a difference if you like one that supersedes if you don't like the other. For example, I think the Chick-fil-A improvements are really something that's needed, although I'm not quite sure it will work as planned. But maybe the Old Navy is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is probably something that, you know, may not fit Newtown, but that's up to the landlord, I guess.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it.
Hey, have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Moving along, members, board members, chairman. I'd just like to say that as we're coming out of this and seeing more businesses being able to expand their services indoor and outdoor eating, that also the businesses have to understand there are some safety regulations that they have to adhere to. And especially on the outside, protecting the outside diners with some barriers is always an important thing. And I'm sure they don't want to see any patrons hurt by any kind of unfortunate accident that may happen. So although we do want to see everybody prosper, please understand that there are some rules and regulations that go accordingly with protecting the public. And hopefully, as we get out of this, everybody will be back to 100% on inside. And I know some places do have the outsides available and everything can be run as normal. That's all I have right now. I'll move on to Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to go right from your chain of thought. Over the weekend, I was really happy to see the ball fields over at Holland Mando Park being used and a lot of people getting outdoor recreation and all of that. However, when I took a drive-through, there were hundreds of cars there. Probably at least 1,000 people supporting the softball tournament. No one was wearing masks. No one was social distancing. And I know that people, some folks had masks with them because we just happened to follow a couple of cars over to Acme, which was where we were going, and they put on their masks to go into the Acme. So if I don't know what we can do, or maybe in the future, put up some additional signage that says, please wear your mask, or do something, but it's not normal.
Something you could address in regards to that with the softball tournament?
Who are you asking? I forgot to, didn't hear the first part.
Mike. I was asking Mike there. Any kind of regulations that they still have to follow, even though it's a
Yes, they had to submit a safety plan, and they need to follow that safety plan.
Okay, Dennis, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Right. I just didn't know who you were addressing the question to. So, you know, it's a new normal where I think we just have to be as careful as we can. Outside is good. Masks are good. Social distancing is good, and probably even two out of the three would be effective. But so that was, that was my one concern, and it just coincided with yours, Phil. I attended a couple of meetings this week. I attended just this morning a HARB meeting. It was the first HARB meeting I've attended because I was appointed back in January, and I missed a meeting. And then they didn't have, they missed one month of a meeting, didn't need to have one, and then COVID happened. So we looked at the commission, the board, looked at some replacement signing for the Rite Aid. And goodness corner, the Rite Aid as a company is doing a new branding exercise. And so they're switching out all their signs. It's a one-for-one switch out of all their different signs. And then last week, I attended a Newtown Fire Association meeting. And there's some, coming up next week is the Finance Committee meeting. So we have been busy and we will continue to be busy. I do have some comments about the sewer authority project over in Nob Hill and Devonshire, but I'll hold those until the engineers report. It'll flow a little bit better that way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Mack?
Okay, I guess I could say a couple of words about the joint zoning council meeting earlier this month. Where basically the E30 Amendment for a combination of a convenience store and gas station and the three townships that are part of the jointure was basically finalized. And it was discussed a little bit at the Planning Commission last night and was a little bit of confusion, and I need to be maybe reminded about the timeline that we have and the next steps for that. I think the final document is going to be distributed to the boards of each township. And I don't know, I just forgot the details about how they're supposed to be advertised for public meetings and when this needs to be finalized. If anybody, Jerry, I don't know if you had opportunity to look that up since last night and give us an idea about that, maybe.
Unfortunately, Jerry's not here, but maybe DeSander could answer that question. Dave?
Yeah. Mr. Mack, could you rephrase that question? I was trying to follow along, but I got lost when you asked Jerry.
Well, I was interested in the timeline for the curative amendment, E30, whatever it's called, what the next steps are and the next steps.
Gotcha. Absolutely. Well, we're ahead of schedule. I think that the original plan for the curative amendment was to have the actual ordinance acted on sometime in October and have that on the books. Now, just because we're ahead doesn't mean we can't go ahead and take action on the ordinance, all three townships, if it's finalized. However, once it gets in final form, it does need to be sent to the Bucks County Planning Commission for a 30-day review. And so that's something that has to happen before we can act on it as a board. And of course, we do have the pending substantive validity challenge filed by PROVCO that we are hoping that the proposed new ordinance can settle that without us having to go to the zoning hearing board and take our chances with getting the Wawa that they want to see on that property versus a gas station convenience store that we would rather see. It's probably going to be somewhere in between. So now that we have an ordinance that is generally agreeable to the townships, I think we have to have additional discussions with PROVCO to see what, if any, revisions we may want to agree with them to make to the ordinance to try to continue to settle their substantive validity challenge. And Upper Midfield and Wrightstown are aware, obviously, that the substantive validity challenge exists. So I think they understand that there may be additional changes, at least to the OR district provisions in the proposed ordinance. So again, it's a work in progress. We're not ready to schedule final public hearings of all three boards and commissions to enact this ordinance yet. But this obviously was a big step by the jointure to say, yeah, it looks like we have a solid framework here, and this is the ordinance that we're going to put forward.
So if I hear you correctly, you mentioned the Bucks County Planning Commission, and you mentioned PROVCO reviewing this. Which comes first?
Probably PROVCO, because again, the ordinance we submit to the Bucks County Planning Commission is going to want to be as close to final as possible. And if we haven't met with PROVCO yet and we haven't discussed the potential for additional changes, I don't want to submit it to the Bucks County Planning Commission, have them review it for 30 days, come back with comments, and then have to submit another revised ordinance to them.
Is the jointure aware of this? Because, Phil, maybe you can verify, I think you were at the Joint Zoning Council meeting also. I thought they were just about ready to make the changes that were finalized and then directly submit that to the townships. Is that not going to happen?
Yeah, I mean, I was on the assumption the next step is go to the Board of Supervisors, the three bodies. I'm kind of thrown for a loop here as to, again, this is called a gas station convenience store ordinance, not a PROVCO ordinance. I don't know why do we have to bend knee to PROVCO. I think, in my opinion, why don't the Board of Supervisors see this ordinance, the three? But since we're the initiator of this ordinance, I'm sure if we approve it, that the other two bodies will go along with us. But then having to wait for PROVCO to give us the word, I mean, I'm just under the assumption or maybe under the impression that this doesn't have to be for PROVCO.
That's correct.
If PROVCO were to pull out tomorrow and some other particular company were, now that we have to get their approval too? I'm under the assumption that we are the one approving it, and they're the ones that have to abide by it. I understand this legal situation that we're in, but they do not run the township, we do. And I don't know why Provco has to have a say before we have a say. That's totally confusing to me.
I would agree with that, and especially since I was told at previous meetings that we could develop this E30 and not have everything in there that Provco wanted exactly. And they can, if they desire, they can go to the zoning hearing board and ask for a variance. So for example, I know a few of us at the last meeting were suggesting that fewer fueling stations than maybe a super Wawa would like to have. But it wouldn't be maybe in the ordinance, but they could come to the zoning hearing board and then have a you know, variance to allow that, you know, so there's this opportunity for you know, Wawa to have further input at that stage. So I agree with Phil, basically.
Let me respond. I agree with Phil, too. We don't have to engage Provco at all.
I think we could end the meeting right there. Everyone agrees.
Well, let me give you the but. The but is that Provco filed its substantive validity challenge prior to the declaration of a municipal curative amendment, which means that if Provco wins its case before the zoning hearing board, Provco will be entitled to develop its convenience store gas station based on its plans, its number of pumps, its square footage of convenience store, its number of parking spaces, its signage, its lighting, its buffering. The reason why we engaged Provco in the first place is to try to bring Provco under the new as-yet unenacted ordinance, drop their substantive validity challenge, but still, for their purposes, be able to do generally what they want to do out there. We can stop right now with Provco, we can enact our ordinance, and then I predict that Provco will pursue its substantive validity challenge. And that's going to be in the hands of the zoning hearing board, and based on current law regarding similar uses in Plumstead Township and in Hatborough, the court decisions are not favorable to us. Our ordinance does not provide, prior to this curative amendment, which hasn't been enacted yet, the combination convenience store gas station use that two courts of common pleas have said is a required use to be provided for, and that ordinances that didn't have that are unconstitutionally exclusionary. Now, I'm getting a little bit into the legalese here, but the bottom line is that Provco filed its challenge before the municipal cure, and therefore, that's out there, that is pending. They have put it on hold in hopes that we could negotiate ordinance provisions that would allow them to do what they want to do without much variance requirements needed or any other additional relief needed. Now, again, if a majority of this board is of the opinion that we should move forward with the zoning ordinance that is currently approved by the jointure, and we should send this ordinance to the Bucks County Planning Commission and schedule a public hearing to consider this ordinance, then that's certainly within your right and means to do so. However, know that Wawa will then proceed, I should say Provco, will then proceed before the zoning hearing board on its substantive validity challenge, and you stand the chance of them having to comply with zero of the provisions of the new ordinance, because their application was filed first. So that's the risk that you take if we stop engaging Provco at this point and say, Provco, here's the ordinance, either live with it or don't live with it. I predict that they will not live with it, and they will pursue their substantive validity challenge.
Well, that goes against being their supposed good neighbor clause.
Well, they're a business first.
Well, yeah, but we could always call for boycott of whatever property, whatever goes there. And we could go, we could appeal to their company in general. What I'm trying to get at is, we're in good faith, trying to pass something here, which is for the betterment of the townships, Newtown mostly, and then the other two townships of which we are protecting with this ordinance. Provco comes in and says, no, 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 we're going to change it to the way we want. Well, I don't know, but in the court of public concern here, I think Provco loses. Now, it's, do you want to win the battle or the war? Now, I think that we've, again, in good faith, have shown that we want to have this ordinance and want to go forward with it. And I don't, you know, I just think if we don't show a little backbone, this is my opinion, I don't know if anyone else, but if we don't show a little backbone against Provco, then are we going to, what are we going to do against Sheets? Or what are we going to do against Royal Farms? Or what are we going to do? And these other townships that you're saying, Plumsteadville or whatever, I don't know if they may, the show of good faith in trying to pass an ordinance of what we're doing. We've gone through a process here, a tiring process, and we're down to the end. And I just think, again, for us to wait for Provco to give us the blessing just seems a little bit out of line.
I mean, I totally agree. We got into this process. Everybody's telling us, well, this is a way for us to put into our ordinance what we would like to have, and as this evolved, it got closer and closer and closer and closer to what Provco originally proposed. And it is, to my understanding, extremely close to what they asked for in the first place. So I don't understand why we have to delay this by going to Provco, and if it's appropriate to make a motion that, I don't know if we're in possession of the final document officially right now, to make a motion that we approve this or not approve it before sending it to the Bucks County Planning Commission.
Well, instead of a motion, why don't we see if there's a consensus to have it on our next agenda? Maybe to discuss. Because, yeah, again, I'm of the opinion that we should pass this, get it onto the Bucks County Planning Commission, let the higher-ups look at it. Because who knows if it's going to have another go around? We all know with the jointure, they change one line in there, and we have to go around to the three townships again. So I'll just ask the board members, I'll start with Kyle. Kyle, what is your opinion?
Yeah, I'm fine with what you're saying.
Dennis?
Excuse me, I'm fine with it as well. I know that the jointure's solicitor should be getting the final draft, her final draft to us pretty quickly for our review, so planning commissions have done their job, and let's kind of keep it moving.
David?
I have to go along with the board, Mr. Chairman.
I'll even ask one more person. I know we got Mr. Fidler on the line, if he's still there. Are you there, Alan? Well, I guess, Mr. Sanders, Alan?
Yes, I'm here.
You've been in on a lot of these conversations.
And I agree, we've made what the Planning Commission considered our best effort to come up with a consensus that met most of the issues that Provco has raised. And I think last evening, Jerry indicated that, in his opinion, having the ordinance approved by the jointure, and even if it goes to the judges of the county to consider, he said we would have an arrow in our quiver. That, you know, we have made a concerted effort to address this use. And because we are a jointure, the process is much more time-consuming. Therefore, you know, we worked at it diligently, and I think Newtown Township should be commended for their effort in recognizing that, you know, getting something approved and on the books would demonstrate to the courts that we were serious about providing this use.
Let me be very clear.
David? I guess, is your next step to coordinate with the other solicitors of the two other townships?
Let me, yes. I mean, well, we're waiting to get the final draft, as Dennis mentioned in his comments, from the solicitor to the jointure right now. Once we get that ordinance, if you want to take a look at it, another look at it, and at your next meeting, give it a blessing to be sent to the Bucks County Planning Commission, that would be the motion at your next meeting, is to send it to the Bucks County Planning Commission. Let me be clear, the court cannot consider an after-enacted amendment when it's considering a substantive validity challenge. Good faith, the three townships getting together and showing good faith and due diligence and prosecuting this promptly, et cetera, not going, that's outside the four corners of what the court can look at when it's going to determine whether the ordinance as it existed before this amendment is constitutional or unconstitutional. Just
No, I appreciate
Posing you accordingly.
To mention that again, but again, I guess Provco's decision here is, do they want to be township-friendly? Or do they want to be a company that is going to be looked down upon? And, yeah, I think that all of us need to read it, look it over, so it's not a decision we can make today. So maybe if that could be sent around in our, well, next packets, if possible, so all the board members can look over the ordinance, and we could discuss it at our next supervisors' meeting. But at least let's show the initiative that we want to move this forward.
Sounds like that's the board's direction.
It's not, Provco is not Provco of Newtown Township. We're the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, so, you know. But that's all I have to say. John, I guess, do you have anything? You're still on your report.
I have one other thing today, between five and seven. I'll be attending a business card exchange from the Newtown Business Association members. And I just hope to have some informal conversations with people there. It's going to be at the Newtown Brewing Company outside, and they're going to have it limited to a certain number of people. And hopefully, all the safety requirements and masking is going to be adhered to. And I'll report back if I learn anything from that meeting.
Thank you, John. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec Report. I have some upcoming camps and programs. We have baking and cake decorating, USA Archery Camp, Summer Art Camp, Outdoor Painting, Junior All-Stars, Evening Yoga, Bricks for Kids Camp, and Virtual Chess Camp. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. David Oxley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a report from the Economic Development Committee from our meeting in July 22nd, maybe July 2nd, excuse me. Going in the future there. The committee, we discussed some short-term strategies for supporting local businesses in Newtown. And that's been going around for the last two meetings, in terms of trying to facilitate businesses to get more influx of customers in a safe way, and trying to design a way where we can encourage folks to spend, keep more of the dollars in Newtown. That's a short-term strategy. Still mulling that over for some sort of permit to be sent to the township for approval at some point. But we'll have more detail around that for our next meeting. Long-term strategy, talking to current business owners in the Business Commons, finding out challenges they've had doing business in the township, and/or if there are any, so that we can encourage them to find ways to, we can bridge the gap there, and then also on top of it, talk to other business owners that they may know to say, hey, Newtown, Newtown's pretty business-friendly. Let's try and see if we can encourage other businesses to come into the township, so that we can create some more revenue that way. And then yesterday, I met with Chief Hearn and John Lieutenant Harris, and Gene as well. We discussed the town hall, and how that's going to look, and what we can anticipate, and trying to make sure it's safe, and all the different concerns that may come up. And we want to make sure that we hear the community, but also do it in the safest way based upon the pandemic. So great meetings, looking forward to that. And Chief's been very open about being supportive of it, and also willing to do another one if it's successful. So that was really positive stuff. You know, appreciate that type of leadership. And I know that his whole, I know that he's going to add a couple other officers there, too, like you mentioned, to have discussions around different parts of the department, if he may want to, you know, quarterback that or shovel past that to one of them. So looking forward to it. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. On the Economic Development Committee, was anything discussed or anything going over the guidelines and the duties that they should be performing? I did send that out. And hopefully, everyone got a chance to look at that.
Well, everyone, we didn't bring it up in the conversation, but based upon the way that we constructed the conversation, majority of it was around how we can help long-term, how we can market Newtown better. You know, so we didn't get into the weeds of what you sent over, Mr. Chairman, but for the most part, I believe the entire committee understands where the direction of the committee's supposed to go. And, you know, Matt Peters would be on today, but he's going to save his report for next month to basically go through everything. But I think we've, we're all focused on what's most important going forward now.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one little bit of something. Forgot to mention the surveys that are being done. There is a business survey that has been sent out to the Newtown Business Association and the Business Commons Association. So those are both coming from the EconSoul Solution five-year planned study. And so that's out there as well. I want to encourage people to take that. And John, I guess, this evening, you can mention it to some folks to log on and get that. There's an accompanying citizen survey that people can get through the township website. So I think we mentioned surveys a couple of times, or will mention it, because Bucks County Planning Commission is sending one out, too. So
Over and invaded with a lot of information, but
Yes.
Important information, Mr. Chairman. But, yeah, to Mr. Fisher's point, absolutely, we did also discuss the survey. And we, and there, members of the Economic Development Committee are parts of, members of the Newtown Business Association and Business Commons, so they were also encouraged to make sure that other members take those surveys as well.
Can I ask a question about the survey? I was under the impression that I know it's being sent out to Newtown Business Association and the Business Commons, but I think it was sent out a little bit tardy, maybe this Monday. And there was a deadline of July 9th. It doesn't give people much of an opportunity. And I know that when you send that email to a large group like the Newtown Business Association, many people don't open the first time you send the email. And so I don't know what kind of response they got from that email. And the other question I had was, so, you know, basically, I'm asking, should the deadline be extended for that beyond July 9th, which is tomorrow? But also, you know, I was told that, you know, it seemed to me in the beginning that this survey was for all businesses in Newtown, whether they are members of the Newtown Business Association or the Business Commons or not. Now, the Business Commons are certainly, all the businesses there are located in Newtown Township. I can tell you that I believe I can tell you that I believe that most of the businesses in the Newtown Business Association are actually not located in Newtown Township. So, um, I don't know, you know, if it's one or the other and if, uh, you know, if this survey could be distributed information more widely to a wider business community. And extending it that time, maybe.
Check that out and get back to us on that. David Oxley?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did, uh, ESI send that out?
Yeah, that was all sent out by ESI. And I've actually talked to Dan about extending that deadline as it is.
That's a good idea.
We're going to see how many we get back and, and possibly extend it.
Great.
Okay, let's see. All right, moving real along. We have no land development. Uh, on to reports of officials. Engineers' report.
All right, thank you. Um, the only item I have today is the bid award recommendation for the 2020 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Uh, we opened bids on June 18th. Uh, we received three bids. Um, this bid had a variety of alternate bids, which is, you know, something that the township does every year. After discussion, you know, with the township staff, um, and the current work that's going on from the sewer authority, that's affecting a lot of the, the various alternate bids, uh, the township decided to go with, um, the base bid and alternate bids number seven, eight, nine. Um, this includes for the base bid, the following roads, Upper Silver Lake Road, a portion of Penn Street, Newtown Yardley Road, and a portion of Swamp Road. And then the alternate bid number seven is a portion of Silver Lake Road, alternate bid number eight is Newtown Gate Drive, and alternate bid number nine is Fountain Farm Lane. Uh, this is roughly a total of 2.8 township miles. That being said, the apparent low bidder for the base bid and the combination of alternates that were desired, um, the low bidder is James D. Morrissey, and we found no discrepancy in the bid documents that they submitted. Um, so based on that, we recommend award of the base bid, alternate bid number seven, alternate bid number eight, and alternate bid number nine, in the total of $621,046.75.
Hey, do I have such a motion?
I can make that motion.
Second. Motion is second. And, and just to, um, you know, ask and go over, Mr. Morrissey has done work in the township previously, correct?
They have, yeah. It wasn't the past two years, but before that they have, yes.
Excellent. Any, any further questions for?
I have some comments.
Sure.
And the reason that I could make that motion this afternoon, we've been talking over, over the months about, uh, repaving, uh, Devonshire and Nob Hill. Uh, they were alternates, uh, one, two, three, and four, I think. Um, and, uh, when it became apparent that the sewer authority work was going to, is, is running late, and there's been some, uh, significant delays, um, we started looking at, at whether, whether the, um, repaving was a good idea. There might be some settlement or maybe some defective work that needs to be corrected from the sewer line, uh, uh, the, the road work. So, uh, I had, um, with, um, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Calabro's, uh, advice, um, I sent a notice to the, um, HOAs in Nob Hill and Devonshire. And, uh, they, they shared it with, uh, the residents. Uh, and there is a, is a broad consensus that folks were, uh, interested in, in having quality work done at a later date. So, you know, if we, if we get on the bid for, uh, next year for 2001, uh, it might give a chance for the, uh, road work to settle out and, you know, um, have a better job when we come in to do, uh, the repaving curb to curb. So I just wanted to make the board aware that even though as a proponent of, uh, alternate bids, one, two, three, four, uh, it, we do, uh, have a consensus from the, from the residents, from the neighborhood and, uh, that, that we can wait till next year for, for repaving if that works out.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. And just to, uh, I know we're in the middle of a motion, but, okay, I'll, I'll ask you. Any, any further questions for the annual motion?
Uh, it may not be, you know, exactly pertain to the motion, but, uh, you know, I have some correspondence from resident, I guess one of the other alternatives roads was Commonwealth Drive. And I had previously discussed this with, uh, Mike Lewis, and I know it's not on the list, but I received a photo. It looks pretty awful, uh, from the photo. But I asked, uh, Mr. Lewis if, uh, since we authorize, uh, some kind of new gizmo to, uh, uh, do better patching of roads, uh, that, uh, if this road was going, if this was a candidate at least to be repatched with the new equipment that we purchased so that it's not full of these holes that I see in that photograph. Mr. Lewis, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, Andy Pothole filler, isn't it, uh, Mike? That?
Yeah, it's a, it's a milling machine for the, for the Bobcat that was purchased last year. And the intent is to guess if the grass would just stop growing and give us a little bit more time with the eight public works guys I have, um, that we would load up that machine and take it over there and, and sort of learn how to use it. But, uh, at this point, you know, we're, they're, they're tied down pretty much with maintenance of the parks and the baseball fields and, and all the other, um, routine maintenance that we didn't hire, uh, part-time employees for this year. The intent is to get over there. It just hasn't been able to happen yet.
Yeah, I'd like to add my, uh, encouragement to get that done if possible. I, I've gotten some calls and I've seen it. It's a pretty bad washboard kind of thing going on there.
That will be on, that will be on the list next year as well for, uh, uh, the road program.
So we could temporarily.
Yeah, we can.
All right, I have motion in a second. Any further questions? Any, uh, anything sent in from the public?
I have nothing.
Okay, so I'll call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Passes five zero. I just wanted to, uh, add something that, that Dennis was talking about in regards to the sewer authority. And I, I, I think we are going to have a work session on Monday. Um, would it be possible if either Warren Gormly or someone from the sewer authority could come to our meeting and give us an update on what's happening over there in that particular area? Uh, I think, I, I, I think, one, we deserve some sort of answers. And, uh, it's a very important that the residents of that, uh, that area over there by Dennis have these, uh, questions answered for them. So, since we are going to have a work session, can we ask Warren Gormly or one of his, uh, lieutenants to show up at the meeting and answer these questions?
I can reach out to him and see if he's available.
Okay, that'll be good.
I'd like that. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome. Uh, on to the Solicitors' Report. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the loan issue on our, our report, uh, this meeting, uh, involved the upcoming zoning hearing board applications. I believe that Mr. Fidler, uh, well, I know Mr. Fidler, uh, briefed the, the board on those applications. There are four of them. Uh, the first one was the Old Navy slash, um, Chick-fil-A improvements. And we did have a, a little side discussion on that, uh, afterwards. The other three are residential, uh, applications that all seem to be supported by, uh, homeowners associations and neighbors. Uh, the question becomes, does the board wish to, uh, take a position on any of the four? Uh, and if so, does it wish to send the solicitor to the zoning hearing board on August 6th, uh, to espouse that position?
I have no problem, uh, with the zoning hearing board making these decisions. Anyone else?
I agree with you, Phil. The planning commission did make some good suggestions.
John?
Um, I guess it's okay.
Kyle?
Yeah, I'm good.
And David?
Just fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll let the zoning hearing board take care of these three, uh, what's that four situations.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our report.
Okay, on to the managers' report. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of today is $2,021,652. Plan expirations before the board with no action required. Uh, I have one item under my report for the board's consideration. It's the, uh, purchase of, uh, gas and diesel fuel, um, from the Bucks County Consortium. Um, our Public Works Director had outlined a recommendation. Uh, so I will frame the motion. Uh, it's included in the packet. It's a, uh, authorization to purchase and delivery of fuel through the Bucks County Consortium through Petroleum Traders Corp. and Reggins, Inc. in accordance with the Public Works Director's memorandum.
Do we have a price or?
It's, the prices are fixed fee minus 18 cents per gallon for delivery of 6,000 gallons or greater for gasoline and, uh, um, ultra-low sulfur, sulfur, sulfur diesel at a fixed delivery fee of, uh, 23 and a half cents per gallon for deliveries of less than five, 6,000 gallons.
So if there's any fluctuation, we don't, we're not affected. We get, we still maintain these same prices?
That's correct. It's, it's, it's destabilized.
Let me ask it, let me go one step further. I, I'm sure we want to be safe if any increases. But if they decrease, do we get any say in the decrease if, if that were to happen?
Well, that's the unfortunate. No, you're, you're sort of fixed. But it, the good thing, you, you're locking it in now and the, and the, the prices of fuel are still re, uh, last year, you know, earlier this year when COVID-19 hit and the prices dropped through the floor, we were still paying a higher premium from the prices from last year. So it, it's sort of a, a gamble, but these prices are, are definitely better than the prices that you see at the, the typical gas station.
Got you. Now, do I have such a motion?
I wish you approve.
Have a second? Have a motion second. Any further questions for Mr. Lewis? Any questions from the public?
There is none.
Okay, seeing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
That's all I have under my report, Mr. Chairman. I just want to clarify one thing. If Mr. Gormly is able to attend on Monday, uh, for the work session, that work session will be via Zoom at, at 11:00 AM?
Correct.
And that's all I have under my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Minutes, bills, list, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 24, 2020 Board of Supervisors' meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have motion second. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Mr. Lewis, any questions from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Okay, um, I make a motion that we approve the payment of our bills according to the bills list dated July 8th, 2020 totaling $307,358,45.
Have motion of a second? Second. Have motion of a second. Any questions from the board? From the public again? Mr. Lewis? No. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Finally, I moved that we approved the interfund transfers as per the bills list dated July 8th, 2020 totaling $277,340.85.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Do we have a, uh, an additional, uh, bills li- bill, bills list that I saw came across email or is that?
No, the, the, the previous bills list had a typo and one under the, uh, amount in the general fund. It's definitely more than $175. So.
Okay.
Uh, we found that error and, and corrected it, so.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, any public comment come across?
There's no public comment.
Okay. Uh, any old business to discuss? Uh, well, I, I just have a piece of old, well, not old business, but continuing business. Um, we are going to open the building for the, the Chiefs Town Hall on Thursday, the 23rd, 23rd. The 22nd would be our scheduled meeting. Is that correct?
Uh, that would be a scheduled meeting, uh, date. Yes, correct.
All right. Do we want to continue Zoom or do we want to, uh, have a live meeting within the building?
Well, I, can I, I'd like to add that it would, will benefit me just because I'm, I'm starting to go back to work and sometimes the middle of the day, uh, BOSS meetings are a little challenging to always make. Um, I was sitting in the, in the building yesterday, obviously, and it was, it was well spread out and, um, you know, I think that we can all be there comfortably. Um, but I don't speak for everyone. I'm just speaking for myself.
No, no, I mean, if, if everyone still wants to maintain a Zoom, uh, we could always, we have a, we have a chance and to change the time to accommodate, uh, anyone with, um, working schedules. Or if, uh, everyone wants to meet in person, uh, we could also do that. Uh, I mean, me, I'll just speak for, I, I'm fine with Zoom. I think it's becoming a normal, uh, normal function of, uh, every municipality's business. And I don't know of any other neighboring municipalities that are starting to meet live. Uh, Mr. Lewis, maybe you have a better feel on that? Or, or do you know when they intend to meet live? I mean.
Yeah, there's, that's still sort of up in the air. It's, um, I haven't heard of any, many meeting live. Mr. Sanders, I don't know if any of your other clients have made that decision at this time?
It was actually one who met live and then decided to go back to Zoom. Um, and that was the only one that met live that I know of. Twenty-plus, uh, municipal clients, uh, zoning hearing boards are meeting via Zoom. Uh, Newtown's zoning hearing board is meeting on Thursday night via Zoom. Um, that seems to be the, the trend. If it's a problem having it at 1:00 PM, uh, certainly, um, some of our other clients have maintained their normal, uh, meeting hours. That's not to say we couldn't move it up to, uh, you know, four or five, but, um, just a suggestion.
You know, four or five is that, five is definitely like, you know, doable. I mean, seven actually would be a bit challenged because it's bedtime in this house and it's, uh, it, it gets a little crazy in here, as Mike, Mr. Lewis already does. Uh, so, so I'm happy to do Zoom. It's just that I, I, I would, I appreciate it at some point if we could probably be flexible on the time if possible.
What about, uh, what about, oh, well, how's, how's everyone else with that? Do they want to continue Zoom or?
I have a few times. Fun by me.
I'm a person with, uh, certain susceptibilities and, um, although I'm trying to attend a few live meetings, mostly outdoor, uh, I do wear my mask. And, uh, at the meeting yesterday, I noticed that we weren't wearing masks. I know it's uncomfortable, but if you do have a, a live meeting in the town hall, like on the 23rd, I hope that we enforce that people always wear their masks indoors as well. And, um, but I'm okay with Zoom whenever you want to do it since I'm retired.
Okay.
Okay, with Zoom at five, at five o'clock, if that's a good accommodation. Uh, we did have a hard meeting in person today, but there were only six of us and we could spread way apart and we used masks. We had our masks. Uh, so, uh, knowing that Board Supervisors, you know, sometimes we have a larger audience and, uh, I can predict a couple of the agenda items in the future, we'll have larger audiences. So, you know, for the 22nd to five is great.
Okay. Well, uh, five, I was going to suggest four because I know that keeps Mr. Lewis in the, uh, thing. And if anyone, I don't know if Olivia's in the building, but we don't want to keep them any later than they. And if anyone, I don't know if Olivia's in the building, but we don't want to keep them any later than they, they should be. Mr. Sander and Leanne, are you okay with the work? Well, David Oxley is four o'clock, okay?
I can make four o'clock work. Thank you.
All right. So what if our next meeting was scheduled for four o'clock, a four o'clock Zoom?
Thank you.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody else have any old business? Okay, any new business? Okay, Dave, did you want to discuss anything about an executive session or? I know not today, but I think, because since we're on Zoom, it's not like we're in person. Uh, do you plan to have an executive session in regards to any kind of litigation coming up?
I think we, we will put together, Micah and I will, will work with you, Phil, to put together an executive session to discuss with the full board the proposed Arcadia settlement. We've gone back and forth with them. They have submitted a plan that looks to us a lot better than what we've seen previously. But we do need, as a matter of settlement of, of litigation, to review that as a board and ultimately take action at a public meeting to enter into a settlement agreement if that's the board's pleasure. So we will be setting that up, um, coming up shortly. But nothing need, nothing need be done today.
Right. Okay, thanks, Steve.
Absolutely.
I guess if there's no objection, I, I guess just to reiterate, we are going to have a work session at 11:00 AM on Monday, Zoom?
If, 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 if this is the board's pleasure, I, I don't have any, any other items other than asking Mr. Gormley to attend.
I thought we had a, uh, I thought we did have an item that was requested.
Not, not that I know.
Dave, Dennis, do you remember? David?
No.
No? Okay, I guess it was in regard to your.
Finance.
Executive session. I thought we were going to be discussing an issue on Monday. All right, forget I said.
Was it about the jointure, maybe?
No, no.
No, I, I don't, I don't.
The only thing I could think of is if, um, that works, and again, I haven't talked to Micah about this and I don't know. Maybe we use that time for an executive session to discuss Arcadia.
Well, that's what I thought. I thought that they, they had submitted a new sketching.
Yeah.
And we would discuss that. That's where we could give our input. And I thought that would happen at this work session, but maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. That's why I was thinking Mr. Gormley could come in for, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes. And Arcadia can be the only other topic that we would discuss, seeing the new rendering that they submitted.
And we would hold, Phil, the, um, the, uh, the Gormley session and as, as part of public session for the work meeting and then, then probably adjourn the public session and go into executive session to discuss Arcadia.
Right. And that's provided, I mean, if Mr. Gormley cannot make it Monday, are we still going to schedule an executive session Monday or it could be another?
I don't have the information from Arcadia that they were, were supposed to provide with us.
Okay.
Okay, so we're still waiting, Micah, on, on materials from Arcadia?
Yes.
Okay, then we better not schedule anything until we get them.
Well, then why don't we just call, then I, I guess we have no need for a work session.
Other than asking Mr. Gormley, no, there's no need for.
Well, then why don't I ask Mr. Gormley to be at four o'clock, uh, our next meeting on the 22nd?
I can do that.
I was just going to suggest that myself.
All right, seeing no objection, I will call for adjournment. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Everybody be well.
Great meeting.
Be safe.